You're on the record.
Okay, good morning. Today is Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. The time is 9:01 a.m. The Board of Ada County Commissioners is in session for our open business meeting. I am here. We have Commissioner Malloy on bridge. Also in the room, I see Jason Bull, Bob Batista, Nancy Wordell, and online, I think I can get everybody. We have Treasurer Mon, Assessor McQuade, I see Director Boyinger, I see we have Trent Triple from the Clerk's Office, Bob Perkins, Evan Amadon, and Saul Saylor. Is there anybody I have missed? Okay, great. All right, then we will go ahead and start up with new business, and I will open the public hearing on change order number one, Ada County Operations Tenant Improvement Project. Is there anybody here?
Madam Chair, any changes to the agenda?
Oh, excuse me, Madam Chair, any, Madam Clerk, any changes to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay, so let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on change order number one, Operations Tenant Improvement Project, and is there anyone here who'd like to testify regarding this? I don't see that we have. I see that it is a decrease of $4,967, which we always appreciate seeing. So with that, if there's no further testimony, I will close the public hearing and would need a motion. Commissioner Malloy.
Madam Chair, I move to approve change order number one, Ada County Operations Tenant Improvement Project, as listed on the agenda, and authorize the acting chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, licenses. And we have a couple on here, a couple license renewals, and I will need a motion on those, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve and ratify the licenses as listed on the agenda, including two license renewals, and authorize the acting chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second, all those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up Clerk's Office. Trent, are you gonna give us an update from the Clerk's Office this morning?
You bet. We are in the thralls of getting ready for the West Ada election. Saul is online with me as well. He will address the purchase of a sorting machine that we're gonna be using for the expected increase in ballots that we'll be having. Phil is out of town right now, although he's not out of mind. He is going to be meeting with the legislators on Wednesday to try to get a special session, ginned up to make some changes to the election codes so that we can do some things in November that will make things safer for voters. And so that's what he's got on his plate right now. Other than that, we're just pushing along with trying to get as much court done as possible, given the COVID situation, and hopefully things will turn around here soon and we can get back to jury trials and some other things.
Okay, and yes, I talked to Phil yesterday. He was in Stanley, but he was whipping votes from Stanley. So, still always working. Okay, anything else, or are we gonna hear from Saul about the West Ada election?
Sure, Saul Saylor here. Commissioners, thank you for having me. West Ada election, that is coming up on the 25th. We are in the throes of that. We will be starting early voting next week at two locations, both here at Benjamin and out at Meridian City Hall. We will be running the majority of our polling places. We did have to consolidate some due to COVID concerns, and are putting a few plans in place for COVID concerns as well, if we lose any more polling places. All of our polling place procedures have gone through CDH, and they've taken a look at those from a PPE standpoint and a poll worker protection standpoint. So we feel good about that. I don't know if we want to, or if you have any questions around August in particular, maybe we should start there.
I don't, I just could-
I know the absentee ballots went out because I received mine. Phil went out and returned it already.
Saul, I just continue to be concerned about poll workers. So I'm interested in terms of what your recruitment has been like and how folks are feeling about volunteering or stepping up in this time.
Great. So we actually feel pretty good about poll workers for this election, and it's strictly because we're running half of the precincts. As we fill, for instance, chief judge positions, we originally had reached out to all the chief judges of just these precincts, and were unable to fill those positions, so we actually had to go to the other half of the chief judges. And even with that, it took some phone calls to make that happen. So I think we can accomplish this without a hindrance, just pulling on our traditional pool. But we will, if we go with our traditional model, I think we will have to dig a little deeper come November. That being said, we are getting a lot of poll worker applications in. I don't know that if that's a result of a drive in any one way, because they kind of came out as a flood. So we do have good applications coming through. I'm also in the process of starting a partnership with both Boise School District and West Ada in terms of reaching out to some of their student leaders and campus groups in order to try and get more engagement from the high school population. So that is something that legally we can have up to two high school students age 16 or older per polling location. And that allows us some untapped poll workers that other counties have really used successfully. Actually, Canyon County did in March for a rollout as well. So that's one that we're exploring largely for November at this point. So poll workers, we have had concerns. We have taken some extra steps, like we are providing face shields that they can utilize in addition to mask of sanitation equipment. So we were cautiously optimistic that, you know, we won't have people not showing up that have committed. That has been a concern nationwide and has happened. So August is gonna be a really good test run for us. To go back to the absentee point, Commissioner Malloy, we did send out over 40,000 absentee ballots as of this point. We've received back approximately 12,500, which in and of itself, I believe is a record turnout for August after a single mailing. So we are seeing a massive uptick in that and just see that process continuing. We have over 100,000 requests in for November already, and we're still a number of months out, of course. Poll worker challenge for August does seem that it is doable. November is still a bit of a question mark at this point, but also as Trent alluded to, Phil is working with the legislature to try and get some, a couple of bills through. I think we're down to three that would really help us come November. So we're cautiously optimistic that we'll get some traction there.
Great. All right, well, thank you. Anything else from the Clerk's Office?
Actually, Madam Chair, I just wanted to suggest, if you guys have any problem filling any of your poll worker positions, I would make a suggestion, you reach out to the central committees of all political parties and just put out a request there for maybe precinct committee people or whoever to get involved wherever they can, maybe fill some of those gaps.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. You know, hopefully we can get everything that we need to fill, but that is always a great resource as well. So thank you for mentioning that.
Okay, anything else, Trent?
Nope, that's it. Appreciate the time.
All right, thank you. Thanks to your team, as always. Okay, next up, we will need a motion on the Claims Journal, please.
Madam Chair, I move to authorize payments on the Claims Journal dated July 31st, 2020.
And I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, personnel action forms.
Madam Chair, I move to approve personnel action forms as listed on the agenda, including one conditional pay increase, three introductory period pay completions, 10 leaves with pay, two miscellaneous, 11 promotions, four reclassifications, five step increasing share of pay plan, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up, Mr. McQuade from the Assessor's Office. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Malloy. Things in the Assessor's Office pretty much sound then just our normal pace. We're out in the field doing our reappraisal as the 20% inspections of the properties that by statute we are required to do. One challenge that we are faced with right now is automotive vehicles, we have wait times. Our average wait time is about 15 minutes, which really is not what we want. The, what's going on out there at motor vehicles, we're having a very high turnover rate. We have just filled six new positions, and that sounds like it's, what a relief. On the other hand, is what that does, that takes up some line workers. Now we have to be devoted to training as well as processes. That slows us down even more. We're working on trying to understand why it has such a high turnover rate, and hopefully we'll get that resolved and get back to the normal wait times of about five minutes. So Madam Chair, Commissioner Malloy, ask everything I've got, and I would be happy to answer any questions you would have, or take any compliments, too.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just wanna say, as one that has lived in a few other states, I almost laugh at you saying that a 15-minute wait time is unacceptable. I understand what you're shooting for, but I recall having to pack a lunch to go get a vehicle registered in Wednesday. And so you're doing great. I appreciate the fact you're trying to do better, but I still don't think 15 minutes is horrific.
Madam Chair, may I respond to that?
Certainly.
Where we get the 15 minutes to me is unacceptable, was years ago, we had done a survey, and based on that survey, 90% of the respondents said that a 10-minute or less wait time was acceptable to them. So as long as we're less than 10 minutes, I feel comfortable. But when we exceed that, that's when I start to get concerned. But Commissioner Malloy, thank you for those encouraging words, but we're gonna get that down there to 10 minutes.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, well, thank you very much, Bob. Okay, and next up, we have Treasurer Mon. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner. In the Treasurer's Office is the first week of the month. They just keep rolling around quicker than we can imagine. So we are wrapping up month end, quarter end. We will present a monthly report to you next week. Otherwise, we always have an eye towards our next tax drive. So we are presently revising our tax bills. Last year, we did a major overhaul of our tax notices, but there were some legislative changes this year requiring tax bills to contain information about expiration dates for bonds and voter approved studies. So we were taking a look at our tax bills. We can revise those as required by the statutes, but then also to just better educate and inform the taxpayers. And then we're also looking at methods towards additional payment options for November. We're looking at ways to enhance our online payment offerings, to make that easier for taxpayers, and then the dropbox. So just, you know, knowing that November, December's right around the corner, and how we can accommodate taxpayers while keeping them and our staff safe. So that's our priority right now.
Great. Well, and I know we've, you know, one of the silver linings of COVID is that we've learned various things, and I know taxpayers have appreciated not having to come through security to pay their taxes. So the dropbox is an interesting idea to pursue. Okay.
Sure.
Anything else? I know you said 2020 months keep rolling around, but I also feel like 2020 is the longest year ever, so. Okay, all right. Next up, we have something with the landfill regarding Caterpillar Equipment, a credit application for Caterpillar Equipment. So unless there's anyone here to discuss, Bruce, did you have anything on this? No, okay. All right, Commissioner Malloy.
Yes, I move to authorize the chair to sign the Western State's credit application for Caterpillar Equipment on behalf of the board.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. I always laugh because when my little, my boys were little, they were really into trash trucks, and now they're over it, and here I am dealing with trash trucks. Okay. Okay, next up, we need approval of the minutes.
And even though I was not here for the March EMS, I move to approve the minutes as identified on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have a discussion about continued use of Expo Idaho for public access to the courts. Yeah, I think this is going very smoothly, and we've been able to get reimbursed through the CARES Act, but would be happy to hear from Sandra Barrios or Bob Batista if they have any discussion for us today.
Good morning, Commissioner, Madam Chair. Yes, thanks to the board's support, we have been using Expo, and it has been, as you mentioned, very, very smooth. Our request would be, if it's possible, to get the board's approval to use it for the month of August. This would help us to not have to come back to you every couple of weeks, and then it would also help with the process in terms of everyone knows kind of what the plan is. We can send out notices that way. Bob's team is also kind of knowing the process. I should mention, too, that I am talking to Bob about possibly extending it past August. As you mentioned, the costs have been reimbursed, or we got approval through CFA, so we're very, very happy about that. And we'll continue to seek approval for that as well. And that's kind of our pitch. If it's possible to continue to have your support, it would be greatly appreciated, and I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Okay, Bob, did you have any comments?
I don't. We have cleared the calendar so that the month of August is available for them to do it. It's seemingly working and getting more familiar with people all the time, and so I think it's working out quite well. We have some, had some minor discussions about extending that. I'm not sure where that would be if things changed, but we'll certainly work with the courts on trying to make that work. And Sandra, just so you know, you should have about three or four invoices coming for rental in your, in your department here shortly.
Okay, Bob Batista, court facilitator. Okay.
Wouldn't call me an extraordinaire, but-
Extra, well, you know what? We'll throw that in there. Okay. Okay, well, I, go ahead. Commissioner Malloy?
You are correct that it is indeed a gloomy year when satellite court is the most robust and continuous thing going on at Expo Idaho. Probably no good.
Yes, but we are glad to be able to do it there to make things happen, so thank you. So I'm ready to support you through the month of August. We've worked out a lot of kinks, and we certainly don't have anything else going on in August. So, yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, no, no problem for me.
Okay. Okay, next up, I need a motion for weed and pests, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve one notice of lean and two release of leans for weed and pests as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, Expo Idaho, we have one interim event agreement for May 5th, 2021. Quinta Nueva on Cinco de Mayo. Let's hope we're in a lot better shape.
There's an error on the date on that. That should be 6/05/21.
Oh, okay.
We've had a correction on that. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Okay.
And so it will be a June date.
June, okay. Okay, I need a motion, please. Commissioner Malloy?
Madam Chair, I move to approve the one interim event for, I believe it was June 5th, agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up, Parks and Waterways. We have a wedding on June 13th, 2021, and I'll need a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move to approve one Barber Park Education and Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up, agreements. We have some exciting things on our list of agreements today, including driver's license facility as well as impact fees. We have the ballot sorter, which is also very exciting, and the toilet, I don't know much about, but it sounds like Commissioner Malloy does.
So the vault toilet, when I heard about this and wondered, it goes out at a campsite or a facility where there is not typically your plumbing and other things. This is one of those, you know, self-contained pit toilet type of things.
Well, there you go. So for Parks and Waterways.
And all the things involved and how deep it is and all that is why the cost is what it is.
Very good. Okay, anything else for discussion before we take up a motion? No? Okay, then I will take a motion for the seven agreements, please.
I move to approve the seven agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I will second. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, procurement. Mr. Perkins?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioner Malloy. Before you this morning, we have a bid 20063 to Ada County Sheriff's Office Modular Classroom. And we did receive two responses for this project, but unfortunately neither bid is responsive. Bid number one from Design Space Modular Buildings, they had an expired Public Works License, and it was not renewed. And bid number two from Pacific Mobile Incorporated uploaded an incorrect bid table, and it was a mistake on their part, and they requested to withdraw their bid due to that mistake, and so we did relieve them of that bid. So that leaves us with two non-responsive bids, and our recommendation for this project would be to go out for a rebid.
Okay. Okay, any discussion?
Do we need to motion this approval to rebid?
Yes, if you, the Commissioner, go ahead and motion for that, that'd be great.
Sure, okay. I have no other questions or comments. Any, Madam Chair?
I, I don't either, so I'll take a motion on a rebid if that's your inclination.
I, I move to authorize procurement to go out for a rebid of bid number 20063 due to non-responsive reaction on the first round.
Okay, I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, miscellaneous, we have a discussion on the request regarding a crosswalk, some crosswalk lighting. And I don't know if someone was gonna discuss this today. Bruce, was that you?
Madam Chair, no, I'm not sure where exactly this is, if it's on a, what was it?
Madam Chair, I talked to Steve Rutherford about this quite a bit. So this is over, coming across from the triangle parking lot towards the courthouse. There's only a single sign in the center of the street, and that sign often gets struck and destroyed. So this is simply a letter going out to ACHD requesting that they look into some kind of, the fiber optic, you know, dots that would light up when people can push the button across the street, or something that's, that's not horribly expensive. We don't need a big crosswalk overarching bridge signal, but something that would identify people and possibly get that sign out of the middle of the street that continues to get destroyed.
Yes.
We had brought this to ACHD. That's sometimes when they're trying to cross there. Like, they just, that sign periodically, or just blow right through it without stopping, so you have to be vigilant. I don't think they're gonna do it for free. They'll probably pay charges for-
Yeah.
Safety, lighting system, whatever they come up with, whether it's the blinking lights or- I've talked with Ada County Department as well, and he's been-
We're unable to hear whatever's being said.
Come on up, Bruce. Sorry. Bruce, this is not the first go-around, it sounds like, trying to ask ACHD to do this, so.
Commissioner Malloy, we've brought this to ACHD's attention on a couple of occasions and got no response. They came out and done traffic studies in the past for the traffic. The other reason we got the little sign that's in the middle that keeps getting hit is because it was in the plan sheets, and we had a fight with ACHD to come back. They even put it in. But it was on the plans when they redid Third Street, and we got them to come back and put that little sign that's up there now. Glad to have your help and support on this to pressure ACHD to come back out and reevaluate the situation.
Okay, so I'm in support of sending a letter, and Commissioner Malloy, well, you take a crack at it, and we'll make it happen. Okay. Okay.
I'll, I'll reach out to the, to the party or two that I know over on that side and see, see what we can make happen.
Okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Sounds good. All right, if there's no further discussion, we will go ahead and be in recess. Okay?
You're off the record?
Will we be, will we be starting a separate WebEx for EMS?
Nope, same WebEx, we're just- Or, excuse me, flat back on the record?
You're on the record?
Okay, today is Tuesday, August 4th, 2020. The time is 9:27. The Board of County Commissioners is in session as the Board of Emergency Medical Services. We have Commissioner Malloy on bridge, and also with us, we have, it looks like, Director Boyinger. We have Brandon LaRosa, and we have Tana Genter. So, welcome. Thanks for joining us. Okay, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to this agenda?
No, there are not.
Okay. Well, I have some lovely years of service recognitions, and, you know, this is not how we would love to do this. We'd like to pack a giant room and, you know, have a lot of hugging and high fives. But paramedics know more than most that that's not exactly what we're supposed to be doing right now. So it's a 20 years of service to remember. So I would love to go ahead and read these recognitions, and I thank you both for joining us. Okay, so I am gonna start out with Brandon. And I have that Brandon joined Ada County Paramedics in July 2000 as a field paramedic. Having lots of previous field experience, Brandon quickly became a field training officer and then field supervisor. In 2012, he rejoined the field as a paramedic until he became a community paramedic in 2015, the position he holds today. Brandon is a natural at helping and leading people by walking beside them. It seems second nature to him to take the perspective of another, and in doing so, his approach to people and problems is direct and empathetic. Brandon is the guy who knows things and openly admits when he does it. He shares his thoughts freely and with ample portions of humor and sarcasm that are widely appreciated. When it's time to do the serious work or have the serious conversation, Brandon's approach changes little, although he does become focused on helping and offers job dedication, conversation, and feedback upon which a person can rely. When you see Brandon coming, you're glad you get a chance to talk to him. You find out everything that is worth knowing, and you feel just a bit better when you're done. Brandon understands emergency medical services. He's done the work, knows its difficulties and problems, and keeps coming back to do his best and help others. Thank you, Brandon, for 20 years of service, and I feel like we need to hang out more. Sounds like you're my kind of guy.
Yeah, if you only knew. I think Steve's giggle says a lot, and Tana's as well, yeah. It's been a great 20 years, thanks. Still looking forward to more fun, so it's a good time so far. Awesome.
Yeah. Steve, did you have any comments you wanted to add in?
Yeah, you bet. I was one of Brandon's trainees when I- Yeah, you bet. Uh, I I was one of Brandon's trainees when I uh, first started here. And uh, I'm still uh, learning things from him, just on a different level than the the medicine perspective. But I I think I've said it uh, before in in these twenty years, to have somebody who's got this much experience in pre-hospital medicine uh, show up in an ambulance at somebody's doorstep is an incredible privilege that the citizens of Ada County have. Um, and Brandon joins the ranks of twenty-plus-year employees who continue to uh, put in twenty-four-hour shifts and and respond uh, to all types of calls. And and it's a uh, a luxury that we have here at Ada County Paramedics that not many uh, ambulance systems have. Uh, and uh, we hope we're building a place that makes uh, more Brandon's. And I I say that with trepidation. I just mean years of experience, not more Brandon LaRosas.
That all helps.
But uh, it 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 really is unique uh, in our business uh, to do it this long and continue to respond to nine-one-one calls. And uh, really, it's impossible to overstate how valuable that is.
Well, I uh, just, you know, like I said, this is, this is not how we'd like to recognize your twenty years of service, but um, it gives me, uh, and I'm sure my fellow commissioner, a lot of confidence, especially with everything going on, to know that um, we have someone with this level of experience in the field doing this right now. So I really appreciate it and um, yeah, thank you. Commissioner Malloy, anything you'd like to add?
Well, I was going to hold my comments till you read them, but I will just say in general to the EMS crews out there that um, it was, it was very interesting for me to be on the other end of things when about three weeks ago, my mom had a stroke at three o'clock in the morning. I had to call. And here I see Ada County Paramedics showing up. And just the professionalism, the the, you know, just get right to it. Um, Meridian Fire uh, showed up as well and, you know, whether it's the training, whether it's the field service that's going on, it is all so critical. And until someone actually needs it, I don't know that we often fully appreciate it. So thank you very much to to everyone out there.
Well, with that in mind, I would like to uh, recognize Tana. So um, this is the part where you guys get, you know, you get embarrassed because we talk about you. Maybe it's a little easier because you're on the WebEx. Um, but I would like to note that Tana Genter started as the Education Secretary for Ada County Paramedics in June two thousand. In October two thousand one, she was promoted to Education Coordinator, the position she holds today. Tana is an integral part of the Education Training Division at Ada County Paramedics. In her duties as one of our education coordinators, Tana schedules all in-house training for the field providers every year to be sure everyone in Access, the Ada County City Emergency Services System, is up to date on their PALS, ACLS, and BLS certificate. There are over six hundred providers in Access. She coordinates the training and instructors seamlessly to make sure every class is a success. Tana also works with the National Registry and State EMS Bureau, setting up the annual testing, which includes multiple testing disciplines done in several rooms in one building over the course of one very long day for an average of twenty-eight students. She's also a big part of the testing and hiring process for all EMTs and paramedics for Ada County Paramedics. Tana always takes time to help providers from Access with questions and paperwork on their certifications, courses, or testing. Her knowledge and understanding and of the education and training programs and processes are a huge asset to the department. Thanks to her hard work and dedication, ACP provides quality education and training service to Access. Thank you, Tana, for twenty years of service. And I'm sure Director Boyinger has uh, something he'd like to say to this end as well.
Yeah, um, really, it it's true to say we couldn't do this without Tana. All of our providers are on a two-year recertification cycle that includes, and I'm not going to get the numbers exactly right, but over seventy hours of continuing education uh, in these day-long classes. And uh, trying to coordinate a a group of paramedics is a difficult task on the best day. Uh, and uh, Tana does it with a smile. Uh, everybody knows they can count on her, and so quite frequently, uh, they're not overly uh, paying attention to their own classes because they know Tana's going to call them, she's going to send them an email, she's going to get them through. And uh, taking that uh, burden on is uh, is really something she's done with a smile. She came to us from Hewlett Packard, uh, and has been here twenty years. And and with her partner in crime, Debbie, really is the the reason uh, that the ambulances respond. If we lose our, if one of our employees loses their certification or forgets to take one of these classes, they can't show up to work. And uh, now that probably, maybe it was three or four years ago, maybe five, I can't remember, Tana can remind me, we took on all the the certification of the fire departments as well. Uh, and they had such a good system set up for taking care of our own people that they're doing that same work for Boise, Meridian Eagle, Star, and and Kuna as well. And uh, we're just so lucky to have her, um, to have built that knowledge base. Uh, and uh, she allows us really to do what we do. And uh, always with a smile. No one's ever sad to go see Tana, even if she has to, uh, you know, scold them a little bit for a class they may or may not have shown up for. Uh, it gets done and and that's an incredible accomplishment.
Well, uh, Tana, anything you'd like to reflect on, twenty years with Ada County?
Oh, it's been like a big family here. It's really great. I like working here. It's kind of challenging this year because of COVID, because we, you know, getting the classes and now we're looking at other ways to do it, like virtual training and stuff, so. But it's it's been fun and I really like it. I like my counterpart, Debbie. We work great together. And so, yep.
Great.
Doing whatever.
Well, I think, you know, one thing I want to know, and 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 Steve has has heard me say this a couple times now, but um, you know, being in these seats in the Commissioner role, you know, we're going from fair to landfill to paramedics and learning so much. But I learned so much during our interview uh, process for for the director position just about um, how highly regarded Ada County Paramedics is across the country. And um, you know, having uh, dedicated employees who are with us for two decades is a big part of that. So uh, thank you both for being such an integral part of this team and watching and growing uh, with this county as we have grown. And um, you know, we're, we're just lucky to be able to come in and help uh, be a teeny piece of that. It's it's you guys who make it go. So, thank you very much. Okay, well, with that, I have a a couple uh, lovely plaques that you can't see very well. Um, but here they are, and we will make sure that they get out to you for twenty years of service. And I have a wonderful day. We have a little bit of business we need to take care of, so uh, we will go ahead and start with that. And Commissioner Malloy, I need um, a motion on the Claims Journal, please.
Yes, I move to authorize payment of claims as listed on the Claims Journal dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty, regarding EMS expenditures.
I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next up, personal action forms.
I move to approve the personal action forms as listed on the agenda, including one leave with pay, six salary increases, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
Yes, okay, great. I will second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, approval of minutes, please.
I move to approve the minutes as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents uh, on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. All those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, next up, we have an agreement uh, with Lagadere, I don't know how to say that, uh, sports for emergency medical standby services. What event is this, Steve?
So this is the uh, uh, it's had many names over the years. I think now they're calling it the Boise Open or the Albertson's Open. Uh, they are going to have the uh, the tournament. They're just not going to have fans. Um, but the, for years, we've been servicing them with a, a full crew plus a person. This year, we're just going to have one paramedic there for the golfers and and for the uh, the guys who hold the signs and put the flags in, whatever, you know, the support staff.
Okay.
And uh, so we'll be there the whole week.
Great.
Just in case somebody gets a backswing in the mouth or uh, a golf ball in the head or something, okay.
Yep, all right. Well, with that, I'll need a motion, please, Commissioner Malloy.
I move to approve one agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the Chair to sign the appropriate documents on behalf of the Board.
I'll second that. All those in, uh, all those in favor, please state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, then we will be in recess and uh, appreciate you guys so much. Um.
Yes.
And we just, you know, we just can't say it enough. It's uh, it's a rough road out there, and uh, you guys are right in the thick of it. So, we'll be chatting soon, Steve. Okay, thank you. We'll be in recess.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
We'll see you back, uh, Diana, we'll see you back for the uh, interviews, I believe is the next thing. Oh, no, Legal.
We have Legal at ten, so I'll see you upstairs. Okay?
Sure.
You're off the record.